Welcome to the China Rest IEA Special Session on COVID and the Economy. So we have four speakers, Laura Carvalho, Carlos Diaz, Fatima Jamalkhan and Anna Itri Bin, and to discuss on Sebastian Galliani and Maria Pilar Lopez-De Vido. So the first paper is presented by Laura, so Laura, the floor is yours, you can share the screen.
Thank you for organizing this session, thank you to the International Economic Association. So this paper is written in co-authorship with two former students of the University of São Paulo. And the main objective is to estimate the impact of fiscal policy in attenuating the recession in 2020, 2021. The main motivation is that as opposed to previous economic crises that I think have led to growing literature on estimating fiscal multipliers, this crisis has had a very special nature. It did combine elements of supply-side and demand-side shocks. Of course, it was also a crisis that wasn't originated in the economic system, but rather in the health system or the health sphere, which means that the type of measures and even the desirability, let's say, of a counter-cyclical effect of fiscal policy was not the same. The fiscal efforts, they were designed for their health, their social, their micro implications when sanitary restrictions were imposed, rather than for their macroeconomic effects on consumption, for instance, given that it wasn't even desirable that consumers went back to their previous consumption habits. Some literature started to estimate the effect of these fiscal stimuli on saving lives. For instance, RAIT has estimated through a microeconomic metric approach the positive impact of the CARES Act stimulus checks in the US and the degree of compliance to stay-at-home orders. You also have some literature, I'll go faster. We also had some literature, also microeconomic, on the effect on income. But this literature usually looked to one particular type of policy that was implemented somewhere. For instance, there is this evidence by Cañado and co-authors that suggests that the federal supplements to unemployment insurance in the state of Illinois in the US attenuated the fall in consumer spending, a 5% decrease in consumer spending due to a reduction in the benefit. That was the result to this reduction. But no study had looked, at least to our knowledge, into a group of countries, different tools, and what the macroeconomic effects of this fiscal response was. Of course, it could be expected that, given the supply-side constraints, the multiplier in this crisis would have been smaller. Also, for the reasons I mentioned, the fact that it wasn't designed for the main purpose of attenuating the fall in GDP, that this multiplier would have been smaller than in previous crises. And that's really the motivation and our research question here. The challenge, the empirical challenge is that in order to evaluate such this effect in the macroeconomy, usually the literature on fiscal multipliers rely on time series or long-time series or a panel of episodes of fiscal expansion and fiscal consolidation that are built in a narrative basis using historical documents. And that doesn't really allow us to separate the effects that the fiscal response had in this particular crisis to the effect on other crises, right? And so what we did was to use a high-frequency data set. And this is maybe the most innovative part of this paper. So we have a panel of 45 countries and we have weekly data for 86 weeks between 2020 and 2021. So we do rely on data that is only for the period of the COVID-19 crisis. The three main measures that we use in our estimation are the Oxford COVID-19 Response Tracker, so we have non-health expenditures. We put that relative to GDP in the 45 countries per week. That includes income guarantee programs, debt relief programs, basically the fiscal stimuli that have been implemented everywhere except for health expenditures. We also take from that database an index that synthesizes how strict sanitary measures have been. That includes closing schools and a lot of other metrics that have been included in that index and also the number of confirmed cases and confirms that. We use that in our regressions as well. Then we have another variable, which is based on the change in the number of people in certain transit stations. That's taken from Google Mobility. So you see how many people are in taxi stands, subway stations, rental car agencies, and it reflects the degree of social distancing that has been applied in reality. Of course, the Containment Health Index includes measures that have been taken by government to prevent people from certain workstations and certain sectors to function. But the Google Mobility Index sees, of course, the degree of compliance to those rules varies across countries. And the Google Mobility Index actually measures if people are actually going to work or not, right? Then finally, the OECD Weekly Tracker of GDP Growth. That's our economic activity measure. That's maybe what allows us to, it's really what allows us to to have an estimation of the multiplier here. For those unfamiliar with this variable, we can talk about more if we have time in the Q&amp;A. But it relies on searches, Google searches of certain terms. For instance, unemployment insurance, benefits, vehicles and certain consumption goods. Basically, the OECD has, based on the searches that economic agents do, it has estimated an elasticity to produce an outcast of economic activity over time. And so it's a measure of economic activity that we have at high frequency. So just for you to have an idea, this is our fiscal variable here. We have it for the USA, so it's basically how much is spent in each week. And of course, it isn't a continuous type of measure. There are some points in time, some weeks, in which the spending is approved, right? This figure shows how many countries approved expenditures relative to the 2019 GDP. So the Y-axis has the number of countries in four different level groups. Just to synthesize, I mean, from the 45th week on, which means early November 2020, all countries had approved some form of fiscal stimulus. Spain, for instance, is a latecomers. It always spends less and it started spending more towards the end of the year. France is one of the countries that spent the most. And 21 countries actually started spending the exact same week in the end of March. Our measure of economic activity, so that's the tracker I was talking about, it really tracks down very well the observed GDP growth. It doesn't get, I mean, more than 70% of the observations in the tracker. The actual GDP are within the bands of the nowcast. So we run a model based on this data, a two-way fixed-effect regression. Using, the first model uses levels of both dependent and independent variables. Standard errors are clustered by country. We have a dummy for times, the week, a dummy for countries. And we use as control variables the health and sanitary policies and the transit variable that I mentioned. The first result indicates a statistically significant and substantial effect of our fiscal variable on GDP. That also works when we include the controls. Of course, the containment, a contemporaneous increase in sanitary restrictions and a reduction in mobility have a negative short-run impact on economic activity. But fiscal policy is able to partially offset that negative short-run impact. An increase in 1 percentage point in fiscal expenditures as a proportion of 2019 GDP has added 0.162 percentage points in the week GDP growth rate as measured by the tracker. But then the problem with this first round of estimations is that this is done in levels and it's also the very instantaneous contemporaneous effect that we're capturing here. And of course, it is expected that fiscal policy has a delayed effect, even if we're talking about short-run estimations. And also, there may be problems of stationarity in some of the variables, which led us to estimate the second round of regressions using lagged first differences of the fiscal measure. And I'm not showing the table here because we don't have much time. I have 12 minutes and I'm almost done with the minutes. But a new round of regressions, this new round of regressions actually shows that this impact of fiscal policy on activity happens in three weeks. This is really when the highest impact is there. Then we ran alternative specifications. Fiscal policy appears as statistically significant and having a positive effect in all these estimations with the contemporary and levels, with the lags and first differences. We also use different values of the Economic Activity Index because they give you a minimum and a maximum. So we test with the minimum and the maximum. And in all these specifications, we find our main results. Then the question of identification that appears is, what if economies recovering more quickly or also more capable of increasing expenditures, which could be making our assumption, our identification assumption wrong? It could lead to a potential rejection of the parallel trends. So if, for instance, you're actually capturing the other way around, the countries that are implementing fiscal policy are already doing better, right? So in order to task for this possibility, we estimate an event study with five leads of the fiscal variable. And we actually confirm our parallel trend hypothesis. We don't reject it. The leads are found not to be statistically significant from zero and including them does not change our three-week lag defect of fiscal policy. We also run local projections. I won't have time to tell you this, but this helps us estimate the dynamic effect of the shocks in fiscal policy. Through the local projections method, we found that the coefficient starts to be significant from the third to the fourth week, which is aligned with what we had found in the two-way fixed-effect estimations. An increase in 1 percentage point in fiscal expenditures relative to GDP results in an average cumulative surge in economic activity of nearly 0.2 percentage points four weeks later. After nine weeks, the coefficient is still positive in those regressions. So to finish here, while multiplier effects may have not operated in the same way in this crisis relative to other crises due to stay-at-home rules, sectoral containment measures, and even the fear of infection by consumers, these responses ended up having a macroeconomic counter-cyclical role. And they, in some cases, we're starting to work on that. In some cases, it was even able to fully offset the impact, the negative impact of the containment measures and sanitary restrictions. So I'll leave it at that and looking forward for the comments and questions. Thank you.
Well, thanks very much, Laura. So Sebastian, you have like four, five minutes to the discussion and select if there is any question that you don't raise here. And then two minutes for Laura to answer.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to join you in the panel. And I really enjoyed this paper. I think they do a very interesting work, especially sort of data collection to do the analysis. I have certain issues that I would like the authors to clarify. The first thing is relates to the strict exogenous of the stimulus. I think that will be the key discussion in every presentation or under submission of the paper at the journal. I mean, the key is what you can show to defend the strict exogenous, right? So in a way, you do some things. For example, you say, well, we test for parallel trends. I think that discussion should be improved. Because what does it mean, parallel trends? You don't have a treatment and a control group here. You have continuous thousand variables that vary for indifferent intensity and time for every unit in the data set. So I don't really understand what exactly a parallel trends will be testing and even how it's implemented. But so I think that needs clarification. So you need to look at the papers that try to simplify the model.
We lost you.
Hello?
No. For the last 10 seconds, we lost your voice.
Okay, but are you hearing me now? Okay, I think, yeah, I have to move it more like here to talk. So essentially, that will be the main issue, right? To really, I mean, do the right tests there because that's it. The other thing is that you need strict exogenous because you rely on two-way fixed-effect error models. And that rules out also feedback, right? It rules out feedback from the dependent variable. So I will try to show that essentially the changes in the stimulus were not tracking the outcome variable a couple of weeks ago. So that will be useful, basically. The third comment I have is regarding the persistent effect that you get from the local protection. Maybe I didn't fully understand, but I think it wasn't clear, really. So how is that performed? So you assume a shock for a week and then you remove the shock and you see persistent and you assume the shock that persists itself. And then you see a persistent shock. And I think that's very different. I think it's the second one, but I wasn't totally sure, okay? So assuming is the second one, I think you find very low multipliers. I mean, it would be nice if you check with other papers and you put your estimates in comparison with the literature. But your multiplier, it's 0.1, I mean, at best, 0.2 in the long run, right? And with, let's say, a marginal tax of 0.3, that's 0.06 revenue compared to an expenditure of 1 point of GDP. So that's practically all, one-to-one relationship between spending. Which that puts you into the, I would say, lower side of the multiplier. So why so? Given that one will have the spec that it was such a slack that we will see low multiplier. So that's impossible at the end of the day. I think those are the main comments.
Thanks, Sebastian. So Laura, you have like two minutes to answer.
Okay, thank you, Sebastian, for the important comments raised. Yeah, on the issue of exogenous. So yes, I agree, this is, I think, the main aspect we need to convince. So one thing that I think helps us in making that argument is that, well, you have this high-frequency data. And to expect that, which is based, and the economic activities data is based on what people are searching. So it's a reaction of the behavior of economic agents to the actual economic environment and conditions, right? And if the tracker is doing its job and what it promises to do, the tracker itself is actually capturing through this reaction what is going on in the real economy, right? And so to expect that, since the policymakers are not using the tracker, and this, of course, is an important assumption, like the fact that they're not using the OECD tracker to design their fiscal stimulus, then it would, I think it's not unreasonable to think that the high frequency, the response of the fiscal stimulus to the tracker is not something that would happen in weeks or so instantaneously so as that we would be capturing the other way around or some kind of feedback, right? But of course, there are other assumptions that we need to make there. And I agree that we have to work on the tests and how to task for strict exogenous. Then finally, on the multipliers. There is a difficulty there, which is to actually translate our results into comparable multipliers because we have actually the effect on GDP growth. So the 0.2, it's like, it's an increase in 0.2 percentage points in the GDP growth rate, which means this is not, this cannot be interpreted as an actual multiplier, like a $1 spending, additional spending leads to a 0.2. That's not the case. We are working on this, on how to transform and maybe in some cases, be able to do that comparison so that we can actually say if it's low or if it's not low. I will leave it at that because I'm asked to stop. But thank you, thank you again for the questions.
Oh, thanks very much, Laura and Sebastian. So next speaker is Carlos Diaz. So the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you, Marta. Thank you, Maria Pilar and Sebastian for discussing. And of course, thanks to the International Economic Association for organizing this session. This is a paper with Sebastian Fosati from Alberta and Nico Traxtembar from Manchester. So basically, what we want to do here is to evaluate the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on the most frequent crimes in Monterrey. Theft and robbery, Monterrey is a capital city of Uruguay, the largest city as well. Theft and robbery account for about 60% of police reports in the city. Of course, this is not the first paper that tried to find a connection between the pandemic and public safety. But I think, at least to the best of our knowledge, we have something new here. What we tried to do is to exploit neighborhood deterioration in access to jobs that can be performed at home. We follow a paper by Guntin 2021. To identify difference in compliance with the stay-at-home guidelines. Then we use a different indifference setup and show that neighborhoods with workers more able to work from home experience larger decrease in police reports, particularly on theft. We have some differences when we compare the results between thefts and robbers. Again, to be very specific on this, there are several papers that are really interesting that discuss this connection between the pandemic, the measures developed by different governments and crime. But most of them, not all, but most of them, they focus on short-term periods of analysis, country-level analysis, don't measure population mobility or capacity to comply with lockdown restrictions, and most importantly, they lack of control group. So we tried to identify a control group in our analysis and also we tried to go as local as possible. We are going to focus on the neighborhoods in Monterrey. Why we should expect a connection between the pandemic, the government restrictions and crime? Just three reasons here. Opportunities, of course, when we change routine activity, we change the opportunity for criminals. Also, the pandemic imply a disruption in terms of social life and relations. And that could change individuals. I mean, change the behavior by individuals. That could affect their propensity to commit crime, you, for example, or related to stress. And also the allocation of policing resources, right? So if we use police resources to enforce sanitary policies, then we have less policing resources to enforce crime prevention. I think I should mention these three dimensions. When we have data at the neighborhood level, we are going to be able to distinguish different neighborhoods in Monterrey in terms of their ability to work from home and then to comply with the stay-at-home guidelines. Then because of that, we are looking to this problem from an inequality perspective, since this ability to work from home is related to socioeconomic dimension. And then the empirical strategy, as I mentioned before, since we are going to try to identify a control group. So for you to have an idea, these are the daily cases in Uruguay for 2020. If you notice, the pandemic started on March 13. We had to wait until the end of the year to see the first wave. So as you noticed, in Uruguay and in Monterrey in particular, everything was more or less under control. So not only we didn't have a lockdown, so we were able to move around, but also it was relatively safe to move around in terms of the probability of get COVID. So this is for you to have an idea to the policies and the restriction in Monterrey and in Uruguay in general. So the government tried to follow this idea of individual freedom with social responsibility. No lockdown, so we were able to move around. And we were able to move around to go and work wherever we work. So the idea is that, okay, do whatever you need to do. Just be careful and try to minimize the risk for you and to the others. So if we see the stringency index for Uruguay relative to our countries in the region, we were in general below until the end of the year in 2021, when the pandemic got worse. And we were below the region and other countries in the world. And if you notice, there is a trend to decrease stringency, in particular, starting in the second half of the year. This also mobility for you to have an idea. In particular, workplace mobility is going to be relevant for us. We return in the second part of the year to pre-pandemic levels. And this is, these are the time series for both police reports. As you see and expect, we have a sudden decrease starting with the pandemic for theft and robberies, okay? And let's go straight to the results. So first, we do something pretty similar to other papers, like a before and after analysis for this whole city. So we did this city-level event study. And as you see here, of course, there are different patterns. We're going to discuss this later. But we identify some effects relative to our baseline. Our baseline are the first two months of the year. And the line is in March. And as I said before, the pandemic started in mid-March. So that's why the point estimate is like in the middle between the two groups. At least for theft, then we have some similar effects in terms of robbery. But then the pattern is a little bit different. And I noticed or recall that in certain way, this resembles what we see in terms of mobility. So let's go to our identification strategy. What we do is we follow the paper by Guntin, who tries, he adapts this approach, using own data to classify different tasks and different jobs and say, okay, this job is more or less likely to be done from home relative to others. And then we look at the data in Uruguay and classify using his index the different neighborhoods. So this is the map of Monterrey. You have all the neighborhood here. And then the darker is the blue, the more likely the population to work from home relative to others, who are more likely to move and go out and work in person or do different tasks that imply leaving home. So basically, we have two areas. One is the coast, this is Atlantic Ocean. And this is also connected with socioeconomic characteristics. Here, for instance, we have the average labor income. But we are going to exploit this and we can discuss this dimension later. And we'll take to see, okay, let me see, we can have a continent treatment group based on this, on the propensity to go out and the propensity to just stay home and follow the stay-at-home guidelines. So we, our research design is pretty standard nowadays. It's a different indifference approach using this event study design. So we have also some fixed effect. There, we are going to show the result first for these two groups. So these in dark blue are the treated, highly likely to work from home. And these are the untreated, and we excluded this neighborhood. Then we are going to change the threshold. Here, we have like the top quartile versus the bottom quartiles. Then we are going to change the threshold to include all the neighborhoods in our robustness analysis. And these are the results first for theft. As you notice, we have first the event study for the untreated, then for the treated. And in the bottom panel, you have the treatment effect, the different indifference result. If, we don't see much effect for the untreated, and we see some effect for the treated. And this is capturing the treatment effect when we combine all these two panels. For theft, we don't see differences when we look at robberies. We see that there is some impact, but the impact seem to be comparable except for two months when we look at the treatment effect is June and July relative to the baseline months, which are January and February. Then we conduct several robust check. We changed the index for the responses to a survey that asked people, did you work from home or not? Then, as I said before, we changed the threshold. Instead of working with the top and bottom quartiles, we have 33% threshold. And then we have the whole sample up top 50% and bottom 50%. We dropped the 2020 fixed effect. And also, given the logic of our analysis, we exclude Monterrey City Center, who also could decrease mobility, not only because people didn't go to work, but also because the reception people, because of the offices and the shopware closed due to the pandemic. Let me show you one of these robust checks. For instance, this one. So in this case, we include all the neighborhoods. And in gray, you will see the main results. And in blue, you have the new results. And you see, because now the two groups are relatively more similar than those in the main results, the effects are smaller, but the patterns are pretty similar for theft. And again, we don't see any result except for two months when we look at robbery. Notice that the main difference here between these two types of crime is that we have two property crimes, but in one case, we have non-violent crime, in the other case, we have violent crime. So to finish, because I'm running out of time, this heterogeneity in terms of violent and non-violent crime is something that is consistent with the literature. There are mixed effect when we see other studies. Particular, we mentioned three here, Mexico, India, and the US. There are less effect and not clear effect when we look at violent crime and murders on robbers. The other thing that's interesting, I think, is this heterogeneity, the mechanism behind this heterogeneity. One potential explanation is related to the opportunity, right? How important is the opportunity when we commit theft versus the opportunity when we commit a robbery? So opportunity is a type of crime that isn't, sorry, theft is a type of crime that is intensive in opportunity. However, we can compensate the lack of opportunity by increasing violence when we commit a robbery. So in that sense, we could expect some differences when we compare violent and non-violent crimes during the pandemic. And the last two things is first, we think that it's interesting to look the effect of this dimension also from the perspective of inequality. We saw that victimization was different due to the possibility to work from home. And also, and this goes beyond the pandemic itself, it's important to evaluate the pros and cons to working from home, something that is trending nowadays. And this perspective, in terms of crime victimization, to the best of our knowledge, is, Kavina, what we look so far. So that's it. Thank you so much. Good for the comments.
Thanks very much. So the discussion is Maria del Pilar.
Yes.
Five minutes.
Okay, thank you so much. Thanks a lot for the invitation and to organize it. Marta, thank you for organizing this. I actually, I enjoy a lot the paper. I think it was the novelty of exploiting that different variation with the pandemic was quite nice. I have still some comments and questions and suggestions that I would like to give to Carlos and co-authors. The first, I mean, when I was reading, I always tried to compare to, of course, Bogota, the city where it was during the pandemic, to see some similarities or differences. The first question and comment is related to the data. For me, although you use, you are clear that you used the data in 2019 and you actually run a robustness check with data on 2020. For me, it's not very clear if actually there were any type of job changes before and after the pandemic, which is one of your main assumptions. Although it seems like there was not, I think it's more important to make it clear in the paper that the data that you get from Gunti 2021, from 2019, after the economic shock, the negative economic shock of the pandemic, even if in Uruguay, the lockdown was very soft, could actually change some of these distribution within Monterrey. My second comment is with the unit of level. I think my suggestion, of course, I think here is very difficult because of the data. But you still have a unit of level that is very high, which is neighborhood. You only have 62 neighborhoods. And you still have a lot, you might have a lot of heterogeneity within neighborhoods that it would be interesting to exploit. We're actually trying to do something similar in Bogota, not with the data of work from home with a different type of data. And we try to kind of like reduce the unit of level as much as we can, because there is a lot of heterogeneity even within neighborhoods that perhaps here, that is not, you're not exploiting enough. Also, when you see the map, there are, I mean, there are basically some big clusters of the treated and the control groups. Then, the other thing related to this are the difference in job within those working from home. When you actually see, I mean, you mentioned a lot in the paper that is, of course, is related to income. I mean, this is positive correlated and highly correlated to income, the possibility to work from home. But when I see, for example, the case of Bogota, there is also a lot of heterogeneity within those that are working from home. So for example, when you see people that are in the high, like in the right distribution, like in the right tail of the income distribution, that might work from home, what they did during the pandemic was that they actually left the city to some house that they have outside the city and start working from there, which is not the case for those that still can work from home, but at their middle income, right? So there is a lot of heterogeneity within income that also might be related to the mechanism. Then also, you argue, I mean, you argue that there is no displacement of thieves, which, and you cite one of the papers, I think it was in Chicago, the paper that showed that usually thieves tend to rob in the place, near the place where they live. But I'm not sure this is the case for Latin American cities. I think also it should be interesting to see like a better argument here. Then, you mentioned at the end, but for me, it's not very clear what is the mechanism at the end here. Because there is no data, you're not showing that there, I mean, what is that? What was the shock of the pandemic with other crimes? For example, if this is, you just focus on robberies and thefts, which is makes sense. And robberies, for example, two properties, which is makes sense. But we don't know if this is something that the decrease was something that it was just like a general trend that was going on with all type of crimes. But if it's just focus on these of thefts and robberies, which, I mean, which, when I read the paper, I thought it was, that was the point of this, right? With the lower mobility, so people stay at home. And also, it's easier to actually look after your place, because you're working from home. So it's more difficult for a thief to actually go and rob your property. But I didn't see that point in the paper. And then, you know, I was kind of like, tried to guess what was really the mechanism behind, why it's interesting to focus on these type of crime and not on the other ones. If it's still, I mean, at the end, it's a matter, it is a matter of mobility. It could be the mechanism that I'm saying, or it could be because I, you know, I go out less. Now it's more difficult for me to get robbed outside. But that was not the type of crime that you focus. So that was a little bit confusing. And I mean, it would be great if you can actually can explain better why it's interesting to focus on these type of crime and how this is related to working from home, which is more or less what I was saying, right? Like, it could be, that could be one mechanism. And then finally, for me, the intuition, something that you mentioned also at the end in your presentation, is not very clear of the findings that you get from, or the difference that you get from results on robberies and thefts. It seems like the big decrease is in thefts, but the robbery is decreasing both treatment and control, which also is related to my main comment on the mechanism, what is this story behind. But I think, I mean, the paper was great. So thanks a lot for sharing this with me.
Well, you have one minute and a half to conclude, whatever you want.
Okay, no, I just want to say thank you so Maria del Pilar, a very nice comment and very nice suggestions. Just to address a few of them very quickly. It's very interesting to try to work at the block level. For instance, we think we can do it because of the crime data. I'm not sure if we can do it due to the constraints in terms of how we classify different type of job. But it's very interesting, the point related to the heterogeneity within the group that is considered treated in terms of, okay, I can stay home, so I should go outside the city and work from my, I don't know. I'm not in the city anymore. So basically, exactly, exactly. So this heterogeneity between high and middle income families is very nice. Thank you. We should work more on, at least to elaborate a little bit more in terms of the mechanisms, it's not clear. We would like to include more crimes. But for instance, we have this problem, like other crimes, that it would be very interesting to see, domestic violence. But the problem is that we are using reports. And due to the pandemic, it's not very clear if we should follow the report for domestic violence. And in other cases, like homicides. Fortunately, we don't have a lot of variants. So it's just because they are similar in certain way, theft and robbery. But at the same time, we have violent and non-violent crimes. But again, thank you so much. I really appreciate the comments. That's it. We are trying to work harder in the paper to try to address them. Thank you.
Oh, thanks very much, Carlos and Maria del Pilar. So next speaker is Fatima Alkan. So the floor is yours.
Thank you. So today, I'll be talking about this paper that looks at the economic impacts of COVID-19 on household mental health in Pakistan. And it's jointly done with Victoria Baranov from the University of Melbourne and Pauline Brojna and Sarah Walker from the University of New South Wales. And essentially, the main motivation behind this project was to understand how COVID-19 has impacted low-income populations. So we know that poor infrastructure, sanitation, healthcare, and high population densities make people in developing countries particularly vulnerable to the health impacts of COVID-19. And this coupled with the lack of social safety nets, you know, these populations are also the most economically vulnerable, especially in the event of a long-drawn-out pandemic, as it has become now. And then we wanted to look at how COVID-19 might have impacted mental health. So most of the current literature on the impacts of COVID-19 on mental health focuses on the developed world. And there's some literature on middle-income countries such as China, Turkey, India, et cetera. So we wanted to look at a least-developed country, which is why we focus on Pakistan. And then third, we also wanted to analyze the impact of COVID-19 on women. So, you know, recent reports, they suggest that there has been an increase in domestic violence worldwide during the pandemic. And this is, you know, likely to persist long after the other effects of the pandemic have subsided. And, you know, moreover, this current global recession that's been brought on by COVID-19 has, you know, it's been labeled the she-session, where we've seen higher declines in employment and labor force participation amongst women rather than men, at least in high-income countries. So overall, it seems that working women with children, they've been the hardest hit. And, you know, this will have long-term impacts, including widening of the gender gap, wage inequalities, et cetera, within a home where, and also gender inequalities within a home where women already undertake a disproportionately higher burden of responsibilities. And then finally, we wanted to look at how COVID-19 has impacted children. So literature suggests that there has been an impact on the mental health of children and adolescents as well. But current literature again focuses on high and middle-income countries such as China, US, et cetera, Germany, et cetera. So in Pakistan, what we've seen is that amongst students who age 16 to 25, about 80%, 85% of them indicated worsened mental health. So we want to look at even younger children. So we focus on children aged 10 to 14 years and examine how COVID-19 may have impacted their mental health. And so essentially, the aim of the research is simply to understand the impact of COVID-19 on economic and mental health outcomes in Pakistan for adults and children. And the study itself is essentially in November 2019, we were conducting this RCT among school-age children, 10 to 14. And the purpose of that RCT was to see how we can improve academic performance amongst these children. So as part of that study, we conducted interviews with 903 adults, 748 mothers, and 155 fathers, as well as 903 children. We had 509 females and 394 males. So for this study, we then leveraged the same sample and conducted telephone interviews in July 2020. So our sample is located in 29 villages across four districts of Pakistan. These include Kasoor, Lahore, Fesabad, and Sheikh Uqura. And the map on the right here shows the location of these villages in our study. And this figure here, it shows the distribution of average monthly household income pre-COVID-19 for our sample of respondents. And the majority of our sample come from low-income, peri-urban and urban populations that are serviced by NGO. The average monthly household income is around US dollars 166. And, you know, essentially, almost 64% of Pakistan's population lives under this amount, lives under average monthly household income of US$166. And so this allows us to extrapolate our results for people living under similar socioeconomic conditions in Pakistan and neighboring countries and see how they might have been affected as well. So looking at the timeline of our collected outcome variables, this table shows that. So for some variables, we have both baseline and COVID-19 follow-up measures. While for other variables, we only have the COVID-19 follow-up measures. The K10 here is the Kessler Ten questionnaire, which is, it's a standard. The K10 here is the Kessler 10 questionnaire, which is, it's a standard and widely used self-reported psychological distress, distress scale for adults. And then during the COVID-19 follow up interviews that we conducted, we asked children whether each of their parents has, you know, if they've noticed, whether they've been angrier and more stressed out during the lockdowns. And so these are indicative variables equal to one if the children responded that, responded yes and zero otherwise. And then we use these measures of personal safety and familial contentment as proxies for domestic violence. So, you know, this can be sensitive topic for respondents and they're all sort of ethics considerations and legal considerations if a crime is reported to our numerators. So just to, you know, go around that, we, you know, we ask these indirect questions to ascertain perceptions of personal safety and marital satisfaction. And also to, you know, avoid antagonizing our respondents as it is a personal and sensitive topic. So this measure of personal safety, personal relationships and familial contentment, it's an index calculated from four statements where the respondents are asked to rate each of the statements on a scale of one to five, with five being very high and one being very low. So one, whether they have enjoyed spending time at home with their family during the lockdown. Two, whether they have enjoyed spending time at home with their spouse during the lockdown. Three, whether they've had fewer disagreements with their spouse during the lockdown. And four, whether they feel safe at home during the lockdown. And then the index is a raw total of their scores to these four statements. And then finally, as a more direct measure of domestic violence, we, in the community, we ask our respondents to rate on a scale of zero to 10 the likelihood that women in their community are subjected to domestic violence during the COVID-19 lockdowns. And essentially, there's literature that suggests that respondents who have personally experienced greater domestic violence, they tend to report an increase in their community, even if they are not comfortable disclosing their own personal experiences. For the children, we have the Hubler Student Life Satisfaction Scale. It's to assess well-being among children. This index is, you know, a seven question scale designed to measure life satisfaction among children as young as eight years old. And then finally, recent literature in psychology suggests that this theoretical framework that Snyder came up with, that hope comprised of aspirations, agency pathways, it has an effect on developmental outcomes for children. So to understand this, we asked children, both at baseline and during the pandemic, to what extent they agree with the following statements, which is they feel positive about their future. If they try hard, they can improve their situation in life. They can, if they like to make plans for their future studies and work, and they have opportunities to develop job skills. And these statements are scored on a scale of one to six. And the index is a raw total of their scores. So for depression at baseline and during the COVID-19 follow up, we, we asked the parents to report how often they noticed their child feeling depressed. And then again, these statements are scored on a scale. And essentially, these questions were translated to Urdu and the literal translation of depression in Urdu would be gloomy, which parents would have understood in the local context without the stigma that's attached, that's attached to depression or mental health conditions. So this would have also ensured a more candid response from our parents in the study. Coming to our empirical strategy for the outcome variables where we have both baseline and follow up measures, we use a different, a different strategy. For the variables where we only have follow up measures, we use a cross sectional estimation. And then at the extensive margin, we use job loss as a proxy for economic impact, which takes the value of one if the respondents reported that they or their partner lost their job due to the pandemic and zero otherwise. And then we also use inverse hyperbolic sign of average monthly household income loss due to COVID-19 to measure the negative economic consequences of COVID-19 at the intensive margin. And we do this only for those who indicated job loss. And so first, we assess the relationship between the prevalence of the pandemic in a person's surroundings and the economic impact on them. And so for that, we have these multiple measures of prevalence. The first is this indicator variable equal to one if the respondent personally knew someone with COVID-19. Then we, we wanted to create this COVID-19 exposure variable. And so we use these four indicator variables, which are all equal to one if the respondent answered yes to them and zero otherwise. So these four statements were if someone in their household or extended family was diagnosed with COVID-19. The second is if the person knew someone diagnosed with COVID-19. The third was heard about people in their village being diagnosed with COVID-19 or knew someone who passed away from COVID-19. And so then to create this COVID-19 exposure variable, it's, it's an indicator variable that's equal to one if the respondent answered, responded, answered yes to any of these individual four scenarios that I just mentioned and it's zero otherwise. And then there's the intensity of COVID-19 exposure, which is the way, which, which is essentially the sum of the four indicator variables that I just mentioned above. And then we have deviation from the village average exposure and deviation from village average, average village intensity. And this is essentially the difference between the individual COVID-19 exposure and the average COVID-19 exposure of the village and intensity similarly. And what we do find is that all measures of COVID-19 that we have in a person's surroundings are highly correlated with job loss, which is our measure of the economic impact of the pandemic. So having established that job loss is highly associated with the prevalence of COVID-19 in a person's surroundings, we then analyze how job loss has affected mental health in our respondents. And here we look at the economic impact of COVID-19 on mental health of adults. And we find a 0.73 standard deviation increase in our K10 score as a result of job loss. And for the K10s, a higher score indicates worse mental health. So this means that we have a 0.73 standard deviation worsening of mental health at the extensive margin for our full sample. And for our sample that suffered job loss at the intensive margin, we find a 0.11 standard deviation increase in the K10 measure. We then again further examined whether this deterioration in mental health, it's whether it's large enough to generate behavioral changes that have been noticeable to the respondents' children. And we find that children whose parents lost their job are 24 percentage points more likely to report their mothers being stressed. They are 16 percentage points more likely to report them being angrier during the lockdown compared to those who did not suffer job loss. And then similarly, for fathers, we find that children in the household that suffer job loss are 22 percentage points more likely to observe increased stress and 13 percentage points more likely to report increased anger for their fathers. There's limited evidence then that the amount of income loss corresponds to changes in observable mental health outcomes for parents to the point that they are noticeable to children. So it's, children are basically just gauging the increased stress and anger with, of one of their parents having lost their job. And then we examine feelings of personal safety in marital, familial contentment and perceptions of domestic violence in the community. And we find that job loss is associated with a 0.38 standard deviation reduction in feelings of personal safety and a 0.29 standard deviation increase in perceptions of domestic violence in the community. And these results are both statistically significant at the 1% level. At the intensive margin though, our results show no evidence that the amount of income loss corresponds to feelings of, changes in feelings of personal safety or perceptions of domestic violence in the community. And then we've already seen that children perceived increased stress and angry parents who'd lost their jobs. In this section, we examine direct impacts on their mental health and well-being. And we examine, so essentially, the economic impact of COVID-19 on our measures of life satisfaction, hope and depression among children. There's only weak evidence that parental job loss is associated with a drop in life satisfaction for children. But we find robust negative effects on hope. This is normalized index of children's aspirations, agency, future pathways. And we find that children whose parents lost their jobs are 0.53, report 0.53 standard deviation reduction in hope. So in other words, essentially parental job loss is an important source of increased despair among children. And it significantly affects the way that they envision their own agency as well as their future prospects and essentially. And, you know, this increased despair is also reported, that's been reported by children is whose parents lost their job loss, has also, is also noticeable to the parents. It has noticeable behavioral manifestations to the point that job loss is associated with a 0.35 standard deviation increase in the depression score that's reported by the parent for their child. And then again, there are no effects at the intensive margin of income loss for any of these indicators for our sample of children. So essentially, our study using a, you know, unique panel survey of parental and child mental health, it finds that COVID-19 has had significant negative economic consequences for low income populations. And our results, they suggest that these negative economic shocks created by the pandemic have translated into significant socioeconomic harm for adults as well as children. And this, this has affected the most vulnerable households the most. And essentially, we find that these adverse effects, they may primarily be driven by the negative consequences of the pandemic rather than the direct health consequences. We don't find any evidence that the lockdown itself has led to decreased well-being. I didn't have time to show those results here, but in fact, we do see that those who have not suffered economically display improved well-being. And we find that households who have lost their jobs during the lockdown, due to the pandemic, are feeling far worse off than, worse off mentally and emotionally. And, you know, these effects are essentially multi-generational, they're there in the parents and in the children.
You are out of time, Fatima.
Yeah, so essentially, that's, that's it for, for, for this presentation.
Okay, so thanks very much. So now it's the turn of the discussion, Sebastian.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you for letting me comment on this interesting paper. I have a few comments again. So the first one is you took a population that was part of an RCT. So we, we would like to know a bit more about that sample, right? Probably not representative of the population. So I would suggest that when you show and you describe the sample, you do it in comparison to the overall population. Something like, like that will be useful to really have an idea of where this population is. Second, second important question is you, you use these measures of mental health, you collect them by cellphone. And that's COVID, right? It's not all that alternative. However, you know, the, the answer of all these subjective questions could be very sensitive to what, the way they are collected. So in a way, it will be nice if, if you find or you know of any study that tried to validate before COVID or, I guess during COVID was not possible.
We cannot hear, yeah, can't hear you.
I think, can you put this line with your, with your equation? I think it will be easier if I have this.
Just two minutes to discuss and then we have, we need to have the answer.
Yeah, yeah, just, okay. But if, if we go to this, not to the estimating equation. Yeah, here. So why, why basically you, you, you do the, forget about the cross section. Those, those are a bit more difficult to, to interpret, but let's take the panel later. Why essentially you interact post-COVID with X, right? It's, it's not clear to me. It's, it's, it seems that in that way, you're, you're sort of saying, okay, X, which will be income or having a job, has an effect of mental health. And it, and it has a different effect on mental health during COVID. It's not, it's not clear that that's what you want to do. But it, it seems to me that what you wanted to show is that COVID impacts X. And then X impacts mental health. And you, you didn't do that, right? So maybe I'm wrong, but I, by reading the paper, I have the impression that that's what you want to do, but that's not what the equation end up doing. And second, either way, either way, it's important to establish, because the, the post-COVID, right? The post-COVID is the year effect. So it's capturing everything that happened in between the first wave and the second wave of your survey. So that, that's fine, but, but it doesn't have an interpretation of the direct effect of COVID, right? It's just the period effect. And I think it, it will be better just to call it like that. Okay, I think those are all my comments.
Thanks very much. So you have two minutes and to summarize and, and.
Oh, thank you so much, Sebastian. These were excellent comments. So your first comment regarding the population and a little more about it. So essentially, yes, because it was part of this RCT that was focusing on school age children, our sample was not nationally representative as such. What we are trying to do is we're looking at census data and other things and seeing how our sample compares to the rest of the population. And those, those results are not here, but what we do find is that our sample is sort of representative of the typical peri-urban population of Pakistan. So it's not representative of the typical rural population and it's not representative of the typical urban. But a large proportion of Pakistan lives in these peri, is peri-urban. And so I think that's something we're working on, to what extent and to particularly to what populations, it is, for what populations it is representative for. Regarding the telephone interviews and how it's a sensitive way to collect information. And, you know, it's the way that the numerators talk to the respondents on the phone can also have a large impact on how they respond to our questions, especially when it comes to mental health and domestic violence and things like that. That's, that's a very good, that's a very good point, I think. Essentially, because we had all this really amazing baseline data for mental health right before COVID hit, so we have November 2019 and then COVID hit. We, there was, there wasn't any way that we could send our numerators into the field because June, July, that's exactly when the pandemic was at its peak, at, at its first peak in Pakistan at that moment. So it had to be telephone calls. But what we have, since then, we've looked at a lot of different studies that have been conducted in developing countries, especially in areas where accessibility has been an issue. And a lot of them have been validated. So we're adding back to the paper as references to those studies. Finally, your comment on the empirical strategy is. Yeah, and definitely I'll look into that and see how we can improve the paper for that. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much. We have just the last speaker, Anna Trivie. So the floor is yours.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much for having me in this panel. I'm going to present my board with my co-authors, Brian Knight and Mercedes Poncel Leon in Gender and Crime. We were thinking about this topic because there's the belief that men are generally more prone to violence than women. In fact, men commit significantly more offenses compared to women. And they are also the majority of the victims or of most crimes with deception of domestic and sexual violence. Segregation is always in the portfolio of policies to reduce gender-based violence in the streets. So here we have a natural experiment, a mandate of gender segregation during the lockdown. We investigate crime during this lockdown in Bogota, the capital city of Colombia, in which men were allowed to out on those odd days and women on even days. There are some papers studying gender segregation and violence. For example, many cities such as Mexico City have a woman-only train and buses to protect women from male harassment. And there's evidence that in Mexico, this type of policies reduce sexual harassment toward females, but increases non-sexual aggression incidents among males. Another example is the gender segregation in schools. And there's evidence from Korea that girls experience less peer victimization in all girls' schools and boys experience more violence in all boys' schools. But outside these cities, these settings, however, there's little quantitative evidence on the fact of gender segregation and violence and crime. So let me talk about the context. Colombia declared a mandatory quarantine to fight COVID-19 on March 23 of 2020. Bogota, the capital city, implemented the Pico Geno policy on April 13, 2020. In 2020, there is, when there was limited exemptions from the gender-based lockdown for people working in critical industries. And therefore, the policy did not lead to complete gender segregation. So even if there were few men outside in the days for women, there were still, they can be still potentially treated by male perpetrators on woman-only days. On April 27, some. On April twenty seven, some sectors reopened, leading to more receptions and thus there's gender segregation. And finally, Pico Genero ended in May eleventh, twenty twenty. So using current data from the National Police of Colombia and comparing Bogota to other cities in Colombia that did not have the gender based lockdown, we investigate overall crimes rates during this period and crime rates on men only days relative to women only days. We analyzed difference between these two days, difference between crimes involving male victims and female victims and difference across types of crimes. For the sample period, the Pico Genero policy lasted twenty eight days. But as a comparison period, we focus on the three weeks before the policy and three weeks after the policy. So before investigating the effects of lockdown on crime, I want to provide evidence that the gender based lockdown policy mattered. Unfortunately, we lack formal data on mobility by gender during Pico Genero. But there are some clues that allow us to think that there was a reinforcement. So first, according, according to the anecdotal evidence, the measure was heavily enforced. In particular, during the first two days of Pico Genero, a police, the police sanctioned around one hundred women and six hundred men in Bogota for violating the gender based mobility guidelines. The fine was around a minimum monthly salary in Colombia. So there were strong incentives to follow the gender based lockdown policy. Here we have some pictures for the, from, from the newspapers on each of the days. We also use a Google mobility data to compute mobility in Bogota relative to the rest of Colombia. We find that mobility was lower on woman only days. You can see here that we have the policy eh, eh, with Pico Genero. And eh, we saw, we see in everything that the mobility is lowering women only days relative to men only days during the policy. So we don't have eh, evidence on the mechanisms, but we think that females were hesitant to go out alone in Bogota, that is a high crime city. And especially during the lockdown policy, when the streets were relatively deserted. We also use data on crime reports, which include information on the gender of the victim to compute, to compute the chair of the female victims in Bogota on each day during the lockdown. We can see here, here starts the Pico Genero and here ends the Pico Genero. And we can see these spikes on the woman only day for woman victims. So this also allows us to think that the policy really matters. We hypothesize that crimes with male victims to increase in men only days. This is driven by the fact that there are both more potential offenders and more potential male victims on these days. In terms of crime with female victims, the predictions are less clear. On men only days, there are more potential perpetrators, but fewer potential female victims. Then the crimes with female victims could either increase or decrease. Like was on woman only days, there are fewer potential perpetrators, but more potential female victims, leading again to this ambiguous prediction. An additional complicating factor here is that females out on woman only days might be more susceptible to crimes by male strangers because they have to go out alone. And across all victims, we expect higher crime on men only days with not clear hypothesis for women only days. So we developed the identity identification strategy exploiting the fact that Pico Genero policy only took place in Bogota and only during four weeks in the broader lockdown period. So we estimate the effect of gender segregation on crime. And for this, we compare incidents in Bogota versus the rest of Colombia for three specific time periods. Men only days, women only days and non-gender lockdown, lockdown period. So we have this regression model where the dependent variables represent the crime outcome in a city on a day. Our key regressors are Bogota times Pico times men only, which captures the excess of crime in Bogota during the policy on days when only men can go out relative to other days outside the Pico Genero period. And Bogota times Pico times women only, which captures excess in crime during the policy on days when women can go out relative to other days outside the Pico Genero period. Here in this graph, we can see that crime is spike during the odd days during the Pico Genero. So you can see this blue ones. There are the days that men can go out. In table, in this table, eh, we show that during the policy, crime in Bogota was higher on men only days during Pico Genero relative to odd days both before and after the gender segregation policy. In particular, crime incidents increased by twenty four percent on these men only days. And this difference is statistically significant. As shown in the second row here. There is no evidence that higher crime on men only days was offset by lower crime on women only days. As crime is actually four percent higher, but is not statistically different from zero. Let's see the second column. Eh, there's a large increase in crime on men only days that is driven by the crimes involving male victims. In particular, crimes involving male victims increased by thirty four percent on men only days. And this difference is statistically significant. And there's no change in crimes involving male victims on women only days. And finally, here we can see that there are not clear patterns for crimes involving female victims as we were expected. So then we start to, to, to study the types of crime. So in men only days, we find that this increasing in, in crime was driven by robbery and homicide. Here, there's one in this one. These types of crimes tend to be committed by males and most of homicides are also males. This finding suggests that men only environment may lead to a more aggression and more crimes involving both male victims and male perpetrators with less secure environment overall. For women only days, we find a like large increase in sexual crimes, which disproportionately involve female victims. This could be driven by the fact that there are more potential female victims on women only days. And among others, these females cannot have male companions, making them more vulnerable to male perpetrators. Here eh, we, we, we have results for intra-family violence, which have been the focus of many papers in the literature. We find increase in both eh, men only days and women only days. An increase of eighteen percent of both types of day during this policy. As seen in the fierce part of the Pico Genero, eh, the days men are at home, there is an increase in the reports. We think that is because it's the fact date of the aggression. But then when more sectors, sectors open, eh, so there are the courts open for women to be able to report the opposite happening. The day women can go out, the reports go up. So overall, this suggests that gender segregation outdoors may lead to less secure environment for females. We explore arrests also, and we find that if anything, the results are reversed with fewer arrests under gender segregation. This result is driven by fewer arrests of male suspects in women only days. As we can see in the, in the, in the second column. We find a corresponding reduction in arrests involving female suspects on men only days, as shown in the final column. So what, what, what is this happening? We think that eh, all the efforts of the police were diverted to enforce the lockdown instead of chasing the people that were committing the crime. So eh, to finish eh, our paper explored the effects of mobility restrictions by gender on crime and sexual violence and documents that mobility restrictions can increase rather than decrease crime. Thank you.
So thanks very much. Uh, next turn is the discussion, Mario del Pilar.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Anna, for this paper. Uh, I mean, I really liked the paper also. I mean, I found it quite interesting because I, I personally experienced the gender segregation, this Pico and Genero. Um, I think, I mean, the, the, the presentation was more clear in some aspects than the paper. Uh, but I'm just gonna go very briefly through my main comments and suggestions. I, I mean, following what the paper said. So uh, my main comment is related with, to the control group. Uh, I think all criteria to, to decide which municipalities and control group is just to say, you know, if he has more than five thousand inhabitants, he's a control group. But you're assuming that these municipalities has gone to this control group, that, that is nothing happened with them. And when you actually check the law, they, all these municipalities, which are completely different, I mean, eight hundred municipalities, they are receiving different treatments at different times. For example, during the period of your treatment between April thirteenth and May third, cities with more than fifty percent occupation in the ICU, they have to implement a curfew and a Pico and C law. And this changes over time. I mean, some cities, one in April thirteenth, other was in April fourteenth, other ones in April fifteenth. And this, of course, means that they're receiving a different treatment that could affect, you know, like that are affecting completely the control group related to Bogota. So I think this is, this is, I mean, this is my main comment to have in mind when, when, especially when you have an identification as a different. Also, on the other side, the policy enforcement of the law, um, even if it's because of the lockdown or because of different crimes, also varies across cities and time. Uh, we know that in the north, in the Caribbean, for example, the policy enforcement uh, was very different than in the center, Bogota and, and related areas. So I think this is, this is, this is something to have in mind that the control group, I think I would, my suggestion would be to clean a bit better, uh, to, I mean, to have a different criteria of a, of a control group. Then there is another treatment that is important to mention here that you mentioned in the paper, but I think in the equation is not, is not, is not somehow included. That is that, that after April twenty seven, other economic sectors that were male dominated open, right? So the intensity of the treatment is very different when you have full lockdown and then you can only go to the supermarket or the drugstore. Uh, if you're a woman or, or a man, depending on the day, that when you actually have different economic sectors that are mainly, mainly male dominated open, right? My third comment is with the data again, uh, because you're, you have, your treatment is, have a daily variation. It's very important to be clear about the police reports. If it's one, actually the report was filled or when actually the event occurred, which is not very clear in the paper, if, which, which one of this is. And finally, with the sexual crimes, I found this very interesting as well and, and the results are quite nice. Uh, but for me, it's not that obvious that, that the, the increase or decrease depending on male only days or women only days. What we find in here in Bogota is that actually during male only days, the calls of women that stay at home reporting eh, intra, intra-familiar, intra-house violence or sexual crimes increases. Uh, while during woman only days, the in-person complaints and the in-person reports of women actually going to the police station and reporting a sexual crime or, or some gender violence increases. So I mean, it's, it's not very clear for me why it has to go one way or the other depending on the male day. My, I mean, I guess, I don't know if you can actually disentangle the, the result by calls or in-person reports, but that would be, that would be great. And then, yeah, that, that, I mean, that would be all with the main equation is related also to the country group. But it was, it was a really nice paper and I enjoyed a lot reading it. Thanks.
Oh, thank you very much.
Okay. Um, Anna, Anna, you now have time to, to answer, respond the.
Thank you very much for the comments. They are very helpful. If you can send me a slide, it would be great. Eh, about the control group, eh, we, we received a referee report saying exactly that. So eh, we have this robust check using synthetic control method that help us to find a better control group. So we are going to use that as the main methodology. So we are going to change our methodology, but, and but it is still robust with this methodology. Eh, we can see this difference eh, in the first part, part of Pico Genero, when the most sectors are closed and then in the second part. So we have, we now have a, a description of these differences and we can track things like with the inter-familiar, inter-familiar violence, domestic violence. Because at the, we were trying to think what, what happened with that result in the table. Would we get that intra-familiar violence what's up the whole period? But then eh, looking at these two different moments, allow us to think that maybe the first one are calls that women are doing. We don't know if this is actually true, but we think that are actual calls that women are making in the moment of the violence, because men have to stay at home. But then when the courts are open, you can just go and report. So you use your day to go and report and nobody is going to, to, to know that you are doing that. Eh, the intra, intra-familiar violence and sexual abuse behave differently. Eh, we eh, explore eh, the, the topic of sexual abuse. And it, it happened a lot in the streets, not inside home. Eh, and eh, about the data is when the event occurs and that's it.
So thanks very much. So we have just like one minute and a half left. But I don't know if some of the speakers want to make last comment. If not, we finish, we finish here. Okay, so thanks very much. It's been a pleasure to have you as a speaker and discuss on. It has been a great session. So thank you.
Thank you, Marta, and thank you all for the presentation.